Okay, welcome. I'm Tim Skagans, Chairman of the Shasbury Select Board. I'm calling this meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, November 5th, 2018. First, I need to check with the board. Does anybody have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
None.
Next up, approval of minutes. We have minutes that were circulated from our meeting on October 15th. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve from Tony, seconded by Art. Any additions, corrections, or discussions about the minutes from October 15th?
I'm trying to think if I was there. Yes, I was. Okay, yes.
Yes, Art Whitman. Ken Harrington, Tony Kurlikowski.
Right.
Okay, I was not there.
Yes.
Why wasn't I not there? I can't remember. I did notice that I didn't have any folder for this one. All right. There's no further comments. All in favor of approving the minutes for October 15th? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, let's see, Art, Ken, Tony, Joe, do you want to abstain?
Yes.
Okay. So, the minutes for October 15th are approved. 302.
There was another meeting. There wasn't that much going on this week. We went to a BCIC meeting or something. Economic Development meeting or something.
Okay. I'm sure it's on my calendar. I just can't remember. Looks like I just have the one check warrant, number 12. The amount of $214,698.33.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Art.
I think we only got one.
Items over $1,000. We have $2,900 to BCRC. $13,000 to Bennington County.
It's the tax warrant.
Tax warrant, okay.
That and the one below it.
Yeah, the next one, $2,200 is, it does say Shasbury ID on the next one. $2,500 to Endine.
That's the spring water testing.
$1,100 to GABFuels. $2,300 to MSK Engineering.
It's part of the garage.
$2,400 to Pete's.
It's tires and a rim. The rim was for the Florida truck and the tires were for...
Truck four.
Truck four.
$5,800 to RK Miles.
Those are the windows for the firehouse. If you remember, we bought them at a discount price.
Right. And $151,000 to Springfield Paving. It would be East Road, I guess.
Yes.
And a lot of that is grant money?
Yes, and that whole amount will be covered by the grant.
$5,000 to Sullivan &amp; Powers for the audit, no doubt?
Yes.
$1,600 to West Mountain Traffic Control.
That's also part of East Road that we get reimbursed for, out of percentage.
And $11,000 to Weyomie Daily. Any other discussion, comments on check warrant number 12? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? So, check warrant number 12, the amount of $214,698.33 is approved. Are there any announcements?
Vote.
Ah, yes.
You need to vote tomorrow.
Vote tomorrow, 7 to 7, at the firehouse. Any public comments? All familiar faces, it looks like. Treasures report. Melanie Dexter, welcome.
Hello. It's all taxes, all the time. I'm a shadow of my former self. Today is the first day I wasn't able to keep up with the influx, and I did process almost $400,000 today, so there's this much still left to deal with from today. So, this is hell week, and I think tomorrow's probably going to be really bad because people like to pay and vote at the same time, so I'll be putting in a lot of extra hours tomorrow. I don't really have anything else to say. It's just all taxes. I passed the 50% point today, so there's still a great big chunk coming my way this week. I haven't made a, I've got enough data now so that I can develop a curve to predict when things get bad, but it's pretty clear, it's just this week.
When you say predict when things get bad?
Well, I mean, I can develop a curve to see when, where, whether I'm, where I expect to be historically with the payments.
So, you're not prepared at this point to say you've collected the right amount of taxes for a week ahead of time?
I am not. I think I need probably, I would be comfortable with four years of data for that, and when I can breathe, I will put that together, but that probably won't be till, till we're freezing in our trailer in January. Nobody's going to want to come visit us then, so...
But I guess you'd send it off to the bank every day, so you know what your daily intake is?
Yes, I do. I process it as it comes in. This is, yeah. I've had a few credit cards, which is great. I'm glad to see people using that option.
Through the website?
Website or in person. Or a couple of bank transfers, which only cost $1.50, and it's instantaneous, so that's a nice option, too. Some people are using cash, which obviously is their right, but it does slow things down a little bit. If you want to look down, there's some stuff going on. You can see, there's a great big million dollars that probably jumps out at you if you go down just a little bit. Yeah, so I already transferred the first million of the school taxes over to them, so that makes things a lot easier over there. So, you can see that we're, in a cash basis, we're in very, very good shape. Oh, that's, that's not right, that garage bond money. I think that's not, I did not update that, so ignore that number.
Okay.
So, the taxes received to date, you can see, I just crossed the 50% point today, actually late this afternoon.
And that's, of course, includes school taxes?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then down below, I think I did not, yeah, I didn't project it to budget this year, this month yet, because, I mean, for October.
Yeah.
Any questions about anything?
No, no, I think that sounds...
Okay, so, next meeting, I'll be able to tell you how we did it.
I do have a question. So, if somebody did come in and pay their taxes with, let's say, using a Visa or MasterCard, now do they charge the town 3% Visa?
It's 2.65%, but it's not the town. The town doesn't pay anything. It's a user fee, so that can be kind of hefty on a, on a big tax bill, which I totally understand. People come in and say, can I pay with a credit card, and then they make a U-turn when they find out about the 2.65%. Totally understandable. Some people think that it works out better for them because of their frequent flyer miles. They do their, they do their own analysis, and they say, actually, it still works for them. So, there are a few who've said that.
If they use a debit card, that's, gets the cash transfer fee, or is that...
No, it's actually, you need to know your router, your bank router number, and it's basically the same thing as writing a, as having a direct withdrawal from your bank account.
Okay, so, can they use a debit card?
It would be the same fee.
It would get the same fee as a credit card?
Yeah. Anything else?
No. Melanie? Oh, I was remiss. I wanted to call attention to the agenda and point out a couple of things that did change. We're, I added a review of our 2018 goals as we ended up head into budget season. I think it's a good point to look at those, because some of them have changed, in my mind, and Dave tells me we do not need the executive session tonight. All right, cemetery report. I see Ken Coonrad.
Howdy.
Howdy.
Let me tell you what, Ellie Hydeck is supposed to be coming.
Ellie will be here about 6:50.
Okay, yeah, we, she was there in the office today. She promised to be here at 7, which we told her to be here, so...
Oh, was it outside or something?
So, yeah, let's, if you don't mind waiting, we'll just skip over that for now and come back when Ellie gets here. That leads us to item nine, our road report. And our road foreman, Mike Yanati, welcome. Take the hot seat.
How's everybody doing?
Good, good. So, tell us what's going on out there.
Oh, one of the things that everyone liked to see was, East Road is paved.
Yep.
That got done last week.
Done, done, all done?
Well, paving-wise, it's all done. We'll be installing shoulder gravel, probably Wednesday or Thursday this week, down both sides of the road. So, we have to back up the pavement, because the pavement now is like four to six inches thick on the edges, and then you have your ditch. So, we'll be installing a wedge of shoulder gravel all the way down, and then into aprons of driveways, and all the way down on both sides of the project. We have all the gravel here, so we're all ready to go. It's just a matter of time and some nice weather.
I saw we have the yellow stripes on there. We're not doing white stripes on there, are we?
No, just yellow. That should be done. I would talk to the trans supervisor that's taking care of that, and it should be done this week.
The stripes?
There's yellow stripes.
Yeah, they're done, yeah, I saw them.
Oh, they did it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Yeah, I was just remembering about White Creek. When we repaved it, we put white stripes on there, and I know there's bigger drop-offs there, but is there, is there a rule about when you do edge stripes and when you don't, or is it a local call?
Tim, I remember that if the state put the white stripes, we had to maintain them. That was the deal. Is that not right?
No, that's correct.
If a white stripe goes down, if the state puts the white stripe down, I guess you have the option, but if they put it down, you have to maintain it every year. Whereas, do they always do the yellow stripe?
They always do the yellow stripes for us, yeah.
If it was a 12-foot road, I'd agree, but it is a, you know, 12-foot lane, I should say. I would probably agree with that, but it's 11-foot lane up through there, so I don't think it's needed.
We never had anything done by Springfield Paving that I know of. Were you happy with them?
Yes. I'm sad to say, they're, they're done. This is their last year.
Really?
So, the foreman that worked on that job is an owner, and then the project manager that submitted the bid and everything is an owner, and the two of them are retiring.
Oh, my gosh.
But they were good to work with. He was really good to work with. I, no complaints.
They also had $27,000 on their budget, so, I like that.
They, no, I, they spot-checked base as they were putting it down. They were happy with our grading, because we fine-graded it before, and, no, he said everything looked really well. I mean, you're going to have some lows here and there. It's hard to grade that material, especially when it's all rock underneath there, too. But I was happy with their work. They, they moved along pretty good, and the plant was kind of slow, but that was because it was tied up for so long doing all these other projects. Everybody was in there.
Yep.
So, no complaints there. Oh, a couple other things. We had some setbacks. We had a pretty good windstorm last weekend. So, we were out all weekend cleaning up. Saturday, me and Ron were out all, all day, most of the day, until it wasn't safe to be out there, and then, once everything, the wind died down, we all came in Sunday morning and opened everything up, so it was safe to travel, and then spent the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday cleaning up, chipping the brush and hauling the trees away and stuff. It was, it was pretty intense.
Mm-hmm.
Had lots of trees down on every road.
Yeah.
Everywhere. Lot more on this side of the mountain, but that wind was pretty intense. That set us back a little bit. Haven't had much luck grading. The weather has not been, been good at all.
I don't remember a day when it didn't rain.
Me either. Sunday, but we all, we're enjoying that off. But the plan is to get back on. Probably won't be fully grading roads right now, but we'll definitely be around spot grading and touching up some of these bad spots, so, as soon as we get some free time, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, not exactly sure when, but the weather is looking better after tomorrow. As everyone can see, we have been around cutting a lot of brush. We've been, we've cut brush on Town Line Road, Eric Road, Bennett Hill, and White Creek Road, and proceeded on Cross Hill Road today. A lot of the back roads, we've gone through and, and cut up the trees and everything behind the mowing tractor, cleaned up a lot of the brush, cleaned it out of the roadways the best we can. White Creek Road hasn't been done yet. There's still quite a bit of handwork that has to be done down through there. So, the plan with that is, after the mowing tractor is, after that rental is all said and done, we'll, we'll be back. We'll have the full crew, and we'll have to hire flaggers to flag traffic, because the traffic on that road is pretty intense, so. There's some cleanup. There's definitely some spots that need, there's a couple trees that need to come down, but it's all stuff that we can do in-house, and then there's a lot of dead elm trees headed towards New York that are real close to the side of the road. Those all have to come down. So, there's, there's quite a bit of handwork that's left on White Creek Road. I know it may not look the nicest right now, but it is very beneficial for the roadway. All this brush cutting that we're doing on all the roads, it's, it's opening up for sunlight for the, for the winter when we get snowstorms, to help ice melt, help melt the snow. It's opening up so that we can see where our culverts are, where the ditching is, like a lot of these roads. The brush is so bad, the, the water's not getting into the ditches where it needs to run. Some of the other problem is, is the brush is growing in so much on a lot of our roads, too, is we'll grade the road the best we can. We'll get the crown the best we can. Well, because the brush has grown out so much, it's encroached on the road so much, it's forcing people to drive down the center of the roads, and after we crown up a road and grade it and everything, and when they start driving down the center, it pushes the crown out. And once it pushes the crown out, the water's not sheet draining, sheet, you know, like it should to the, to the ditches that we have, so there's, it's really beneficial for us to be cutting this brush, and it's just, it's very time-consuming if we were to go around and cut it with, just by hand. Having the tractor go ahead and cut most of it down, it saves a lot of time. I know it doesn't look as the nicest right now, but we're trying our best to clean it up as we move forward. And then, all the roads, like to, all the ones that we get, all the brush we get caught, I would like to ditch all those roads, too, and clean out culverts and do, get the drainage where it needs to be, because I don't know how much longer we'll be doing road maintenance, you know? We'll be plowing snow before you know it. I'm sure, you know, it'll come a time, but we will be out cutting brush as much as we can this winter, for sure. There's, there isn't a road in this town that doesn't need it.
Are we going to rent the tractor to do that?
No, we'll, we'll do a lot of handwork with the chippers and chainsaws and stuff, which is needed. There's, there's trees that are four, six inches that are really close to our roadways, and it's not doing any good. We were just, just up on Town Line Road this morning, and we were cleaning up the brush that was all cut, and there's a culvert that's completely blocked on one side because of a big shrub that grew up. So, it'll be beneficial once you can see in, you know, into your ditches and get some sunlight into there. It'll definitely help.
Do you think that East Road has a scheduled bike to be graded?
Yeah, that part of East Road's going to be graded all the way up.
The top of the hill, the Bigfoot Hill, back down to the blacktop?
Yeah, it needs it. I agree. We all, we agree, too.
Can I just make a comment to clean up? So, I'm a resident of Cross Hill Road.
Okay.
And know that you cleaned up in the past, but I think it's beneficial for you to know that, that brush acts as a filter for the dust in the summer and spring and so forth. When the road is dry, you guys go in and you clean it up, and we can't breathe in our houses. I mean, the roads are so bad with dust that, that just penetrates into the house when you clean up all that brush. So, I would just ask you to take that into consideration, that you try to weave something there, if you can.
Yeah. Whereabouts are you on Cross Hill Road?
Last, last house on the left-hand side.
Just before the pavement?
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, you could just see clouds of dust when...
When that, when you do get, when it gets very dusty like that, feel free to call, because we do put calcium chloride down when we have that issue.
When the calcium chloride is down, it's not as bad, but it doesn't last forever. And it's bad.
Well, thanks for bringing that up.
Good point. Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of conflicting desires here. Mike wants to get the roads into shape, and a big part of that is clearing the brush and getting the ditches in there, and then, you know, I'm yelling at him about the ugly trees on White Creek, and you want to keep the, the brush up to keep the dust down?
I'm not sure that he, that he realizes what happens inside a house when all of that stuff comes down. I mean, it's fine that it comes down. It looks great and all that kind of stuff, but there are consequences to that, too.
Yeah.
Just wanted to...
And, and, you know, I know Mike is, is real accommodating, and if there are places where we can, you know, not push it back as far from the road, and it's not going to, you know, hurt, hurt the drainage, we'll, we'll try to accommodate it.
I know, I know last year, a bunch of trees were just pushed down, and when those were pushed down, it took all the brush and shrubs, and it just cleared out a fairly wide swath of brush that was growing.
By your house?
Yeah, just before, just before the house.
That was before me. Can't answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, pretty much, we're just going behind that tractor, cleaning up the best we can, and then we'll be doing a lot of excavation, too. That'll be cleaning up once we put some ditches in some of these roads that need it. Another thing, we'll, we've been working on is maintaining our winter plow equipment. We've been going through everything, for the most part. Stuff's pretty in good shape. There's a few little odds and ends, but tomorrow's going to be a rain day, so we got a list of some plows that need some welding and stuff like that. Morse Repair just took care of the Dodge 5500, got the sander going, motor and everything was just tired, so that's, we just got that back today. They, they went through the plow on it, did some, had to change some solenoids. It wouldn't go left to right. Just typical maintenance. And, oh, we're going to go around, and once everything dries out, I want to go around and blow out some of these ditches and blow the leaves out with our new blower, but we will be respectful to everybody's homes and stuff. The guys understand that when you come up close someone's house to idle it down or to not even blow it. I mean, we, we know that there's got to be some common sense involved with that, because you can do some serious damage.
Yeah, it's also, let's remind people that we also got that blower to clean the roads before grading, which is something Ken's been telling us about for several years.
Yeah, it's, it's great. The guys running the grader love it, and it actually, after you're cutting brush and stuff, if you go up through and it blows all the twigs and stuff out, we used it after the windstorm. It's, the thing's been great. Bennington, I spoke with RJ. Bennington's going to come up and check it out, because they want to purchase one, but they want to see how it works first, so I said, oh, you're more than welcome to come up and see how this works, so...
How much longer we got the tractor with the brush?
Till Tuesday.
Till Tuesday?
Yeah.
Any thoughts on next year?
I don't know if I want to go with that tractor.
Okay.
I think I would like to try something else.
Yeah, okay.
And that, I don't think, I ran it for a day when David had to do water, and I don't know if it's, if it's the, the tractor is nice, it's just, I don't think it's the right mowing head we need.
Okay.
But you don't know until you try.
Yep.
Okay.
And I think that's about all I have, and we did just get that other grant to work on Horton Hill, but that'll be planned into next year's summer activities.
Right.
And I think that's about it, unless you guys have any more questions?
Questions, comments?
I have a comment. Just to let you know that there is some good, some good buzz on the street about the work you've done in Shasbury Hollow. I had some people approach me on Halloween that came to my house, you know, trick-or-treating, and actually brought that up to me, that, wow, Shasbury Hollow looks great.
Yeah, the gravel they put down is holding up really well.
That's what he said, Todd Thompson looks like.
Oh, yeah, that's good to hear. Good feedback means a lot, too.
It's a good job.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mike. All right, I see that Eleanor is here, and we are, we can back up and get our cemetery committee report. Ken Coonrad, Eleanor, I can't remember your last name.
Hi, Jake.
Hi, Jake, thank you. You and Ken want to take?
Do, and...
Sit over here. We also have Rob Stewart, our trustee of public funds, is here to fill in with the numbers relative to the several funds that we have relative to cemeteries.
Good evening, gentlemen. We're actually here for actually three reasons. The first one is, we want to request that there be no winter burials at the cemeteries from December. We want to make it the 1st to the 15th.
Well, depending on the weather. Probably from 1 December till about, till fall. Last year, at Center, we had a couple burials that we needed to do in January, and it's very difficult to plow in the cemeteries when there's ice underneath the snow. They slid around and knocked a lot of corner markers out, moved one headstone, and knocked the fence post over. So, I think we should consider the possibility of refusing to bury when the conditions don't, aren't right.
I didn't think we did that anyway, because the ground was frozen.
Yeah, we've been doing it.
And I have checked around, and Rutland does not bury after the 1st of December to April 15. East Dorset does not. I did not check with Bennington, but I was kind of going up that way.
So, we can do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that is a request. That was the first reason we were coming tonight, was to request that, so that we notify the funeral homes.
And the problem is just trying to, to drive around in there with the, to do the digging?
Yeah, in most cases, last year, we had to plow, and it was almost impossible to plow, because there was ice underneath the snow.
Yeah.
And even, they plowed with four-wheel drives, and even so, they slid around, and then you couldn't avoid hitting a corner marker or a headstone.
Your problem, Ken, is that you get that snow down there, you get two or three storms, and it's frozen. You can't move it.
Yep.
Or if you do, you're fighting with it.
And the roads are narrow.
So, if you kept it plowed all the time, well, who wants to do that?
In one case, it couldn't even get into the entrance of Center, because it was so icy that trucks slid, the plow hit the...
What are you going to do about the casket, so?
What's that?
What are you going to do?
Well, that's, that's a big question. We don't have vaults, so I don't know whether the funeral homes would be willing to store them.
Store them.
Or how that would work. So, it's something we need to...
Well, don't we have to find that out first?
Well, it needs to be, yeah, it needs to be considered.
Well, it's, we certainly don't dig graves when the ground is frozen, do we?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
They have this thing, blanket with propane torches under it and everything.
Because if you get snow on the ground, it's not going to be frozen anyway.
I remember last year, we made a suggestion to the town crew that they leased, after all those things, that they leased plow into most cemeteries.
Yeah, I thought we were plowing. Yeah, I thought we were plowing the cemetery.
Yeah, they did. They did. But it's just, and they did good. I've gotta tell you, they did really good. But when the, when the conditions are like they were in Center last year, it's just impossible.
So, so if we do say this, I think we also would say we aren't gonna plow them at all, is that? So people will have to walk in if they want to see a gravesite? Okay, I mean, it just makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, if we're plowing them and it's not, not doing any good, uh, I don't see any reason.
The problem is tend to, you either gotta plow it or not plow it. If you plow it once you start, you're okay because you can, you can stay with it. But if you let it get two or three storms, what it does is every time between the storm, it melts and it makes ice.
Yeah.
We had, we had several, uh, piles of, of gravel in Center last year where the plows got into a soft spot and it just plowed up the whole road.
Well, the other problem was both the town plows are too big to go in there.
That's the whole thing right there.
That was one of the problems, but we solved that by using smaller plows.
Yeah, but you, you're gonna have to hire a private contractor to do that.
Exactly what we had to do.
There's a, there's a vault in North Bennington. Is that private?
Uh, that's part of Grandview.
And that's part of our cemetery.
Yeah, that's a part, that's Grandview.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know, um, yeah, I don't know what the capacity is for that. Now, we didn't have that many burials last winter. Four or five?
It's, uh, but since we also are now in charge of, if that's not a private one, if that can be used, that might be a possibility to store.
That's a good point.
Okay, would you check into that?
I think what we're looking for is permission to do that and we can contact the funeral homes and see if we can make this a workable, um, thing. If the selectmen give us permission to not do it if we can work around it.
I think we need to check with the funeral homes because they may.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do that. We'll do that.
Well, you, you're saying the other cemeteries don't do it, so there must be ways to, to deal with it. I think we can assume that it can be dealt with.
Now, if it's a cremation, uh, you know, that's not a problem. They hold back cremations for years actually, but if it's conventional, could be an issue.
Do you wanna, do you wanna come back to us and with that decision?
Yeah, we'll check on the vault. We'll check on the funeral home.
Check with the funeral.
We can assume that that's a problem that gets dealt with if all the other cemeteries are closed to us?
Well, I mean, you know, you've got.
Well, Rutland Cemetery must have much larger vaults to hold more, with a big zip, a lot more population of them.
Um, if you want to check on that, but yeah, we're, we're agreeable to do that.
Before it snows.
Okay.
Um, separate question though is the, the plowing, uh, just so that people have access to visit graves without having to, to walk from the street. Is that, is that a hard thing for the crew to do?
I didn't know when you plowed the site or this.
Yeah, you haven't been.
Yeah, we tried that last year. We hit things because the smallest one we had was the, was the red Dodge Ram.
With a 12 footer.
Yeah, with the 12 footer.
Those, those driveway roads are there, very narrow.
Yeah, it's a little bit hard for us in the go rate. And what, what Ken's saying is absolutely true. If we don't do it every time it snows or every time it accumulates anything and at least salt them, it's gonna be a slippery mess. And once you plow, once you make the first pass and once you try to maintain, you have liability if you're not keeping it exactly when someone walks in and falls. So the usage, I think it was only a few years ago when we were not plowing. The cemeteries were not open during the winter, so we'd be kind of reverting back to the way it had been. Is that right, Ken?
Yeah, that's right.
Is that what, are you all okay if we don't plow the cemeteries in, in the winter?
I don't know of any cases where anybody got very upset because they couldn't get in, you know, and there's two feet of snow in the cemetery out. I can't imagine anybody having to get in and visit a cemetery.
Well, if we don't have the equipment to do it, it sounds like we shouldn't be trying to do it. And if we're not doing it every time, then it really.
It, it, it doesn't work.
Damage adds very costly.
Well, the smallest plow that tells that's what that fuck?
A 10 footer, yeah.
Yeah, they came with the new Dodge.
Good. Uh, so how about we get a motion, cause I'm pretty sure we, we made a motion to plow the cemeteries, uh, in winter. So is there a motion to not plow the cemeteries in winter?
Someone.
Moved by Art?
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any more discussion on that point?
Well, I, I think maybe they should be plowed as needed. If, no, not at all?
No. The comment is, is if you plow it and then you don't maintain it, and somebody slips and falls.
Okay. Yeah, you either plow it every time down to the grass or you get ice built up underneath, which is what, um, they were dealing with. Trying to get in there to dig graves.
Okay.
Okay. No more discussion?
None.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 So the, uh, the motion to not plow the cemeteries in the winter is agreed to by a vote of 5-0-0. Somebody notify the, the road for me. Oh, he's right there.
It's okay, I didn't know he was anyway.
The second, the second reason we're here and, um, the one that I'm the most excited about is that, uh, we have a very active cemetery committee and we're all very, very interested in seeing our, our cemeteries restored to what they could and should look like, um, historically. And just the fact that, you know, we all feel very strongly that, uh, the people that pay for perpetual care should have the best of our abilities. And so we looked into our fund situation. The Huntington Cemetery Fund, and that was a, a fund that was set up by the Huntington Calvin Huntington family, is used to maintain the headstones in the cemeteries. And the Huntington, uh, section of the cemetery at Center Shasberry is a, quite a large section. And there is approximately $59,300 in this fund. It has not been used. And, uh, we contacted a, um, gentleman in, uh, West Rutland, whose family has been doing this for four generations. And he came down and met with Ken and I and we went to Center Shasberry, Maple Hill, Wait Cemeteries the other day. And he, uh, looked every, the sections over and discussed with Ken, uh, the repairs and so forth. And so we entered into a contract with him, uh, to work on the Huntington Cemetery's section first. But we also want to, uh, do some work later in the year. And this is a project that's gonna go over several years. It's not anything that's gonna be done right away. But what we contracted with is for him to come three times on the Huntington Cemetery to clean and repair stones, starting at the front, which is where people go by the cemetery and see what the cemetery looks like and working back. And so he was originally coming in the spring, the summer and the fall, three visits. Well, he found that they could come down Saturday. They didn't think it was gonna be very rainy and they would come down and do one, the one first section at Huntington. And they did come down and Ken went up and met with them and, um, discussed getting water, extra water as they needed it. And he did a wonderful job. Uh, I went up there today and took pictures and I'm telling you, I was so excited. I saw him. Ken went up to see him. The man did over 30 stones. And he also wanted to check on the stones that were down and the things we have to be repaired, cause stones have to be repaired. Uh, and alls I can say is, uh, it's, it's gonna be beautiful when it's done.
It's a very, it's a very professional, uh, outfit. Been in business for many, many years. And, uh, they know how to do it. They got the equipment. Uh, they only had to come down to the town offices and get one load of water. Uh, they do use a lot of water. They use pressure washers and, uh, they have the right equipment to do it. It just works great.
And, and basically he and his son worked. Now, they were under the tree, the one tree next to the old church there working when that huge plow burst came and they were debating whether or not, you know, he said to his son, well, what do you want to do? He says, well, we're wet anyway. So they worked from 9:30 in the morning straight through until to, to something in the afternoon.
About 2:30, yeah.
Now, now their visit, coming here to do this, this contract is a one-time thing or?
No, no, he's gonna make, yeah, he's, he's going to come now. He's gonna come in the spring. He's gonna come in the summer and he's gonna come in the fall.
I, I was, I didn't know if that continued on for years and years from now.
Well, that, we did it, we set it up for this year, but the thing is, this is, if, if we can get our cemeteries looking the way that we really should and there's a lot of things that need to be done, uh, this is the thing. Uh, he's going to, at Maple Hill, going to do the old, cause that's one of our oldest cemeteries as far as stones. So they'll be working on the oldest stones first.
How often is that recommended to, to, to do, to clean those stones, did they say?
I've talked to a number of people about how often they should be done and I've heard, now, Bennington tries to do it about every 10 years. 10 years they get, they start looking.
Yeah, moldy, yeah.
But it's been, and, and as he said, I mean, you're, did that come through by the way?
You know, um.
It didn't?
No, it didn't. I don't know why.
I've got some pictures on my cell phone that I took and I really would like you to see them, pass them down and see them. We had hoped to.
Yeah, she sent them to me and I didn't check earlier, but.
I was just like a kid in a candy shop. I'm telling them, do they eat the smoke?
This, uh, this, uh, company has, uh, the equipment to come down if they need to reset a basement or to repair a broken headstone. He has all the equipment to do that. So he can do the entire cradle to grave kind, kind of thing with the headstones.
And basically that's what he was doing. He cleaned the stones that he did and he, he's gonna bring down equipment to do the tall, the tall monuments. But just to give you an idea, this is, and I'm just gonna pass it on down. This is what it looks like, hun, what part of the Huntington Cemetery looks like. If you just kind of pass that on down through, looking back at the stones. And a lot of them in the older part of the cemeteries. Okay, now, this is, this is some of what he did. Look at that. Some of these stones, these people died in the 1700s.
Wow.
Did it stay there?
Yeah, I've got it now. Wow.
Let me just.
Wow.
See that stone?
Yeah. Is that after, when they cleaned it?
This is after he cleaned. He did 30 of them.
Yep.
Over 30 of them.
Oh, wow. That looks perfect. You have to be careful with that marble though, right?
Yes.
With, uh.
And I'll tell you, he knows, he can look at a stone and tell you what it's made of, where it came from. So then he knows what to use and what to not, what not to use on that stone.
Cause that's why they stopped rubbing.
Yes, absolutely.
The wear, yeah.
That's right. Yep.
Wow.
Some of the headstones that are up in Center were actually mined over in West Shasberry. And they actually came out of Shasberry Mines.
And he, and he could look at a stone and tell you what it is and where it was made.
Wow.
Mm-hmm, cool.
So.
Very capable guy.
To me, this is fantastic. And what it is, it's $1,600. Every time he comes down, he's gonna come down three times this year, which means we would, we will be taking $4,800 out of the $59,000 that's in the Huntington Fund for the three visits. And that's.
Yeah, the, the, the three visits are spread out for what reason?
There'll be two in this year's budget and one in next year's. That's why we're spreading it.
Saturday was the only time he could come this year. So he won't be coming again until spring.
Okay. But if, you know, if we're talking about the Huntington family part of the cemetery and the Huntington Fund has all that money in it, there's no reason to try and spread that out for, for financial reasons. If it's, uh, if he's got the time, let's go ahead and get the Huntington, uh, part where it's supposed to be with the Huntington money. Yeah, I.
I don't see this any thing to do with us as selectmen. I mean, this is money that was.
Well, he does a lot of cemeteries, so there's only, he'll, you know, he'll, I called him and told him how happy I was today. And I mean, and how, and one of, how wonderful it looks, but he will give us as much time as he can, but he does, this is what he does all over.
Right, right. But I, I think we have to authorize the release of the money, don't we?
No. Oh, we do?
Oh, yes, so.
Yeah, it's gotta be verified that it is actually Huntington.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought maybe essentially it was.
Yeah, I think we're the, we're the gatekeepers on all the funds essentially, aren't we?
Okay.
Most of them.
Yeah.
That's one of the reasons that Rob is here, because we want to discuss the other one, but.
But yeah, my point is if, if, you know, um, you don't have to spread it out over different budget cycles if we're talking about using the Huntington Fund to repair the Huntington family headstones. We can do that as soon as the guy can be scheduled.
True, but what we would like to do is do something in all of our cemeteries because they all need work. So when we set this up, it was to do, and if you can do more in Huntington, that's fine with us certainly. But we would like to see something happening at Maple Hill, which is an old, old cemetery. That's why we scheduled two visits for Maple Hill and one visit for Wait, which is smaller. And then Grandview, uh, I said, if you have time, we're applying for the, uh, North Bennington Fund, uh, for $800, uh, to clean stones in Grandview and we have to match that out of our funds. So we'd like to get one visit to Grandview because that old section of the cemetery along the road is in bad shape. So we want the people to, in Shasberry, to realize that we're not, we're, wanna take care of all of the cemeteries. That's our responsibility to the people that are there. So that comes into us, the separate set of funds that we're gonna talk about.
Yeah, I guess, I want a clarification. Huntington money can only be used on Huntington's.
Correct.
That's correct.
Correct.
So, so when you start talking about Maple Hill, now you're asking, coming to us?
Uh, now we're coming to you, yeah.
Through, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, but with regard to the other cemeteries, I mean, the funds that are available, it's my understanding that the only thing that can be distributed from those funds are the income that's derived during the course of the year. The principal is supposed to remain invested for perpetual care. On an annual basis, at the end of each fiscal year, we issue a payment to the town that represents the income that was derived from that. And I just, a few weeks ago, I sent a check off the line covering that amount, which I believe was around 30, you know, 40, almost, almost $5,000.
So I assume that should be kept separate when it comes into us, Dave?
$5,000, we have a, we have a budget line for that. So the $5,000 can be used for some of these repairs. I think, um, what, what they're looking at is, is to actually start spending some of the principal here. The, the whole basis for this is a, a, uh, policy written in 2006 by, and adopted by the select board, which is one of the many policies we need to, we, we look at. Uh, cause I, it's correct the way it's worded, the interest, it's even kind of worded oddly, but the interest, uh, which I call the income, not any contributions that come in as part of burial procedure, but the interest is what can be put out the following year.
Yes, and interest in terms of dividend, dividends, not capital gains. Capital gains are considered part of the principal, so there may be capital gains that are derived as well, but those are strictly, is strictly dividends.
And so when, when was this, when, when were our hands tied? In 2006 or you don't know?
I don't know.
See, in this policy, I'd like to know what you have that mentioned the capital gains, because that's not in, in the policy.
For, for the fiscal year that ended June 30th, um, it was actually, you made it up because it was actually a capital loss.
Oh. Okay, you get that one still.
Yeah. Uh, the year before 2017, the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017, the distribution was, uh, $3,200. There was an additional 50, almost $5,300 in capital gains. um, the distribution was thirty-two hundred dollars, there was an additional fifty, almost fifty-three hundred dollars in capital gains.
And, and where does that go?
It goes, it just gets reinvested.
In, in, into public funds?
Yeah.
Is that a rule, I'm, I'm just wondering, is that a rule for this, it's not in the policy, so where does...
It's, it's just through the notes that I've, during the years, uh, looking through what I have, it's my interpretation.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, yeah.
So, somebody, somebody dies and they leave money, at that time, are they the ones that say this can only be used? Or was it a policy that some Select Board did, or both?
It's, it's my understanding that it's both, that it's a combination. In, in addition to that, monies that are derived from sales of pots go into that perpetual fund, although, you know, he's never really given us any of that money, but there's, there's supposed to be... I, I believe that the current value includes monies that were derived from sales of pots for years.
Yeah, I know, half of them, half of the cost of a space goes to perpetual funds.
Yep, I do remember that one.
And right about now, gentlemen, just approximate, there's around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in the perpetual fund account.
If, uh, maybe part of this solution is I get a copy of this to everyone, and we move this up the list of things to be reviewed, review it with the public trustees, and update this now to a new policy.
We don't wanna override somebody's last little testimony, but on the other hand, if some Select Board made this part of the policy, then obviously it can be changed, so...
Right, right, if we've got cemeteries all over town that need money spent on them, um, it doesn't make sense to keep pouring the money into the fund what it needs to be spent on the cemeteries, yeah.
If I could just read this part of it, it says, "The income from this fund is used to maintain the town's cemeteries under the supervision of the Select Board."
So, wouldn't, wouldn't the perpetual fund also pay for the cleaning of the stones?
That's...
Or both, not, not the Huntington's, the Huntington's.
No, but I'm talking about the perpetual fund.
Sure, the perpetual fund can be used for, um, anything that's associated with...
With maintenance of the...
The mowing, the mowing, the mowing is all, which is...
Comes out of the perpetual fund.
There's, there's also a cemetery trust fund, which was established to, um, allow for the purchase of equipment and to maintain. So, if you're doing stones, I'm not sure which applies to the, yeah, but there are two separate funds that are there.
At one time, not sure how many years ago, uh, the town actually bought loan mowers to mow, mow the cemeteries. And, uh, that, that was determined to not be a, a way to go, so we stopped doing that, and we con, started contracting the mowing up, which I think is working quite well, has worked quite well for the last few years.
So, the, so the only money that has been spent out of that public trust has been for mowing, and...
I, I...
Have you spent that?
The only contributions that we've made are, um, like I said, the income, and that's gone to the town.
But nothing from the perpetual fund?
Well, well, the income.
The income.
The income from the perpetual fund, nothing's come from the cemetery trust fund, because the trust fund is for equipment or to purchase land, neither of which we buy from a cemetery anymore.
The, the, let's be clear, uh, the two, the, the exact names of the two funds we're talking about?
One is referred to as the cemetery trust fund, the other one is the cemetery perpetual care.
Right, and Ellie said that the perpetual care fund specifically says the income is used for maintenance.
No, it's used to maintain the town's cemeteries, yeah, under the supervision.
And the, um, the cemetery trust fund, how is it?
Can be used for equipment or for purchasing money.
And does it also say income? Okay.
So, again, I'm confused, the one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in perpetual fund, what is it used for?
The income is from this fund, is used to maintain.
I'm talking about that money, that money just sits there.
The money comes to...
Oh, so it's never touched?
I've never distributed any, any principal.
The principal is not distributed, the income comes into the town.
So, it's just an estate to generate income, okay, thank you, that's what I was thinking.
And that, that comes into the, the town budget, we use it as part of the, the total town budget. We don't collect enough in cemetery fees to maintain the cemetery, so that money, that income from those two funds, along with taxes, is what covers the cemetery expenses.
The, the trust fund money that's transferred, it has, it has an income line in the chart of accounts, and it's basically, it helps to offset the mowing contract, 'cause it's not, it's so little, it's not really gonna take us beyond simple maintenance.
No, yeah, it's not much money at all.
And basically, gentlemen, what we're proposing, what we would like to do is, and, and this is, again, we feel under the cover of maintaining our cemeteries, is to clean and repair the stones. Ken and his partner have been doing, you know, the smaller stones, but there's some big ones that require equipment even to, to do. And the other thing, and I want to mention to you, is the other thing on our list that we wanted to do when we have gotten prices on, is to have the Village Cemetery fence in the front, what's left of it, to be sandblasted this year and repainted. And Bill Hardy has offered to paint that, and we have a company from Skodak, New York, that has given us a good price. And then, when we were doing our annual walk-through of the cemeteries, we discovered that the Center Shasbury fence also is very badly flaking, so we're trying to work a deal out with the company that's gonna do the Village, if they would come and do the whole thing in one day, and maybe give us a little cut off from what it might have normally been. But we would like to get that done, because those fences do need to get taken care of.
Wasn't there a fund for that fence?
We've never been able to replace the fence in Shasbury Village, it was taken down.
Okay.
There's, uh, two hundred and sixty-two feet in Village that needs to be done.
Yeah.
And then, the other day, I called in to the same company, uh, we have nine hundred and sixty feet at Center, which is basically the same fence.
Yeah.
And they're, they're quoted ten dollars a foot for the Center. He told me that because of the greater distance for Center, it would probably be considerably cheaper for the Center. And if we combine them, we might get a good price for both, to do them at the same time.
Isn't that fence too far gone to try to paint it?
What's that?
The, in the front, up by my house, isn't that iron fence pretty well shot? Probably beyond painting.
Yeah, it is.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it be rather had to get, uh, I don't know, I've seen some vital, vital fencing, it looks pretty good.
But, but that fence, that, that fence on seven A?
Yeah.
That's good fence, that is good fence, it's good fence.
Wouldn't it be cheaper to, I mean, that's pretty rough some places, Kevin.
It's very old, but it's very good.
Yeah, I know.
Aren't some of the runs rotted on that?
No, I don't know, one run that's, that's rotten, no.
Wouldn't it be easier to just take it out, put it in the vital?
That...
I mean, it's, it's, that's gotta be a Jordan sandblast hat.
Yeah.
Each individual...
Yes, sir.
So, you're talking ten foot a square foot, or is that ten dollars a linear?
Well, ten foot a linear foot.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna tell you guys, that's your business, it ain't up to me, but...
Uh, I'll be honest with you, I've only lived here fifty-eight years, so I'm a newcomer, but that fence in the Village Cemetery, that's, that's special.
Yeah.
That's special, that's part of Shasbury.
Well, therefore, I was born.
That's right.
I'm gonna date myself.
See, uh, the ten dollars a square foot is for painting?
No.
In sandblasting, just for sandblasting, and then, we would want to paint it, prime it, paint it, probably they would do both at the same time. Uh, as close as possible after sandblasting, because if you don't, it's going to, it blazes over, it's gonna rust, and, and you've lost it.
Does anybody else think that sounds like a lot of money, ten dollars a foot to, to sandblaster?
Did we try to paint one of them?
Yeah.
The sandblaster?
That's, sandblaster, painting, or just sandblaster?
Sandblaster.
Just sandblaster.
It's like sandblaster toothpicks, then.
And then, painting?
Yeah.
Okay, well, what we need is, uh, is a bill, how much is it gonna cost to do everything you want to do?
The quote for the, for the Center comes out to be thirty-two, thirty-five.
Three thousand, two hundred...
It's gonna be twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty, and then you have, uh, travel for, they're down, they're, they're down in New York. They're charging two fifty at fifty miles, uh, travel costs, and they're charging for seventy bags, at seventy dollars a bag for material. I don't know what they use for my material, whether they use walnut, walnut shells, or, um, they claim that it's, uh, dust-free.
Are we gonna get environmental stuff with that lead paint?
We assume at ten dollars a square foot, they're taking care of that, don't we?
Well, I don't, it'd be, I'd be kinda interested to clean that up.
It's gonna be a cleanup.
Thirty-two hundred dollars...
You ever went with a sandblaster?
Thirty-two hundred dollars to sandblast the fence at...
At two hundred and sixty-two feet, yeah.
At Center Shasbury?
Yeah.
Okay, but we don't just wanna sandblast it, we wanna paint it.
Yeah, and Bill Hardy is agreed to paint it, we've got to buy the paint, but Bill will paint it, so...
Oh, he will paint it, uh, just for the cost of paint?
I don't know what the cost of the paint would be.
Oh, well, if he's willing to get, the paint's cheap compared to the labor, so...
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill, and yes.
Have to use a certain kind of paint, and Bill knows what to do, what to use.
All right, are we agreeable?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
I wanna, I wanna know if there's any environmental problems with this paint.
Part of any contract he signs with the town, he has to have environmental pharmacy, just like any paint structure, he has to have it in, tested to make sure there's not lead in it, if there's lead in it, there's remedial steps that'll have to take. I mean, we'd have to do that whether we were doing this building or anywhere else.
Right.
Well, I just, I just wanna make sure that's covered, because...
Good point.
If, uh, we can get a price that is, um, from the same company, that can do this the same day at the same type of thing, or a little cheaper, we would like to do Center Shasbury the same day.
Um, yeah.
But...
Is, is Bill gonna paint it for us also?
I'm sure he is, he doesn't know about Center Shasbury yet, but I think I can...
Yeah. Should we wait on a motion till they do get a definite price?
Yeah.
If we just make a motion for this, they're gonna come out.
Check and see if we can get them both done at once.
I tried to get a quote for both today, he said he would like to wait until, how it goes with, with, with the Village.
So, he wants to make two trips and charge us the mileage.
Yeah, that could be, no, I think he's, I think he's being smart, you know, he would like to see, how does it go with the Village fence? It might be a little more, it might be considerably less, we don't know.
Is, is there more expense involved here with, uh, headstone cleaning in other cemeteries, what, what's the total package?
I wanna give you the total package, okay? It's sixteen hundred dollars when they come a day, all right? And like I said, he did over thirty stones, so what we said, there's three days at Huntington, we don't, that comes out of the Huntington Fund. So, we were considering the two days at Maple Hill, and one day at Wait, which will be another thirty-eight hundred dollars for cleaning and repairing stones, part of it the current year, and then the fall would be in the next year's budget. Okay, so there'd be, you know, two days, one, you know, one year and one day the next. And as I said, and if we get the grant from the North Bennington Fund, we could then include North Benning, the, uh, Grandview Cemetery, one day cleaning there, and it would cost eight hundred dollars, because the North Bennington Fund would pick up the other eight hundred. That's our, that's our wonderful wish list, if we could get it all accounted for.
Okay, well, this is, uh, this is by way of budget discussion, so if you could get all those figures to Dave, and Dave will, uh, put that into the budget, and we'll...
Because then we have to answer the question on the table, too, of, of, can we review this policy and talk about accessing...
Well, in addition to that, um, last year, we received, it was roughly eighty-two thousand dollars from North Bennington for Grandview Cemetery. I've kept that fund separate, separated, because I have no idea what we're supposed to be doing.
Eighty-two thousand?
Right.
That was their perpetual care.
That's their perpetual care.
Right.
So, I don't know whether it actually should be rolled over into our perpetual care, whether there are any other restrictions, or any other...
And we, we have the sixteen thousand that, that we discussed, the fifteen thousand that was coming out of that transfer to do the work we've already done in Grandview, so you'll be getting a, a, uh, bill from, I'm gonna forward you a bill to take that fifteen thousand out to reimburse the town, 'cause that work's been done, so I'll drop that principal down.
If the same restrictions apply to Grandview as would apply to the other perpetual funds, in theory, we should only be paying out the, the income.
Right.
And, again, and that's a, a good question, when they abandoned a cemetery, which they essentially did, we get the property, that's more a legal question, which we can take it with merit on practice, I, I really think part of this is to move this old policy up to the top of the list, and we'll have this legal review and see what we can do, I mean, this is a board policy.
So, that North Bennington can be, might be unrestricted? You don't know.
Yeah, I'll have to go back through the legal papers, but the, the only reason we were keeping that aside, really, was because, you know, we inherited this money, and a clean way of looking at it, that is the money that was paid to the perpetual fund for that particular cemetery, whereas if you pay Ken the, the fee to buy a pot here, it's any one of these cemeteries that currently exist in Shasbury, so mingling it would kind of, the eighty-three thousand was just for Grandview.
And that's the reason why I kept it separate.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we've left it that way, too, so...
With regard to, uh, the Grandview thing, we took over management of the Grandview, I think, in July sixteen, and, uh, we immediately realized that there was a real problem on the south end, and, uh, it was just a junk pile, and it was encroaching on many of the existing graves in the cemetery. So, I went looking for someone who could clean it up, and we did get, uh, Matt Morse went in there, and he had a pretty good idea of what he'd have to do, but it turned out to be much, much more than we thought. He took out fifty-three loads of junk, uh, concrete, he found, uh, uh, vacuum cleaner, barrels, coffee makers, uh, flower pots, uh, anything and everything, just unbelievable what he took out of there. But we ended up gaining about fifteen feet on the south end of that cemetery, so it was, it was a worthwhile effort. And, uh, in the spring, we'll rake it out, seat it down on the south side, we also cleaned up on the south end, and we'll put a gravel road in there in the spring, so that's gonna be a real, real improvement for, for Grandview. And that's where the sixteen-five, yeah, Bill came from.
Okay.
Uh, Ken, just a thought, have you looked at pricing, uh, replacing that fence and the project down here at the Shasbury Cemetery?
Yeah, I, I went to a place in, uh, Brattleboro, uh, I also went to Cumberland Farms, because I kinda like the, the steel fence, or not steel, but it looks like steel in front of it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I haven't, they haven't come up with any names or places that I can, I can check with them to see what it would cost.
I'm just wondering if it...
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of work involved in paint fence, sandblasting it, it might be cheaper just to replace it.
But, we got a thirty-seven thousand dollar cost, uh, estimate...
Yeah.
To do four hundred and eighty-six feet of fence on the south side of Grand, of, uh, of Village, thirty-seven thousand for a wrought iron fence.
Well, does it have to be wrought iron, though?
What's that?
Does it have to be wrought iron?
Well, that's what we, that's what we wanted, you know, we wanted to match what's there.
Well, I understand, but I mean, you've got vital and stuff today that you may be able to, you know, I, I, I feel confident letting you guys do it, but I'm just...
We just haven't considered vinyl or, or, or plastic or anything like that.
Cindy, didn't Cindy talk about a natural fencing? Wasn't that a discussion?
We did, we did consider a hedge fence.
Yeah.
Uh, we considered, uh, steel rail.
Yeah.
Stone was another one?
Yes, yes. I personally... I personally, for other than a frontage, I personally like split rail. We put split rail on the north side of Center. We did that ourselves. All we had to do was have the holes dug.
Yeah.
We put split rail in there, and that was about eight years ago. We've only had to replace one split rail. And it's easy to replace. Simple, buy an eleven-dollar piece of split rail and replace it. I like split rail myself. But because the old fences at Center and Village are wrought iron, I would just hate to see them replaced with anything.
Those are valuable, but those are...
That's personal, that's personal.
Those are antique.
All right, so what we need then is your wish list written down, because we're not gonna all remember it in the prices. We want to get a legal opinion about these funds. If the status of these funds, the fact that they can only be, only the interest can be used, was a select board prerogative from two thousand and six, then it's, that's something that we can look at if we have, you know, if we wanna change that so we can fix the cemeteries up with principal, we can consider doing that. So that would, that will affect how we budget for this over the next year. So we've got those two action items.
A question, I guess, for Dave. Dave, that environmental question that Ken brought up, is that something that, should I check with the company and get that?
Well, I think you should ask them whether they consider that. And if they haven't, I mean, I've used an environmental company here on a number of projects, I can just call them and say, "Go take a chip off the fence and let us know." You know, because they all come and sample the fence like they would anything else. Because if they are sandblasting, it is lead paint, Ken's completely correct, this is a hole. And sandblasting would add considerable expense, it would probably have to be tented or something to do that, which would drive that price up considerably.
But basically, what we're looking at is not everything done in one year. The fences are important, and we thought if we made a start on the stones, that's why I said a two- or a three-year or a four-year project. But we all feel very strongly that we wouldn't be on these committees.
Yeah, well, a lot, you know, that will kinda depend on, you know, what we decide to do with the funds. You know, if it's gonna, if it ends up that we can use principal in these funds, we can, we don't have to spread this out. We can get our cemeteries where we want them sooner.
If you're going to get an opinion in regard to the perpetual fund, also find out what's going on with Grandview as well. And find out whether that shouldn't have suffered or combined with the current perpetual fund, just so that we know what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We should, we should turn... I think I know the answer on Grandview, is that we can do what we want. Because they gave us the money, they didn't, they didn't put any particulars on it.
We'll get everything, we'll get a written opinion on everything.
But, you know, we should consider whether or not we want to spend all of the Grandview Fund, or a large part of it, or if we want to add it to the Perpetual Care Fund, generate more income, because we've got another big cemetery that we've got a budget for every year. So there's a couple of considerations there.
Which you might wanna consider setting a target amount that's maintained.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, it's gonna change over the course of years with either increases or decreases through capital gains or income. So if you pick a number, if you say you wanna maintain eighty thousand dollars, we can try and target that.
Right, I think that's, yeah. I think we should try to make our money work for us in order to do that. We need to maintain a certain amount of principal.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that there's a lot of money sitting there that's growing. It's great that it's growing, but it's not gonna put the use of it.
Where is that money sitting? Just in the bank? I mean, is it...
No, 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 it's invested in...
Oh, it is invested? Okay. Is it an active investment account, or is it...
Absolutely. We review that on a quarterly basis.
Okay.
Yeah, and while we're asking the lawyer things, it would be nice if we could have one cemetery fund instead of three, I think.
Yeah, that would be good.
I think that, if I remember...
You can't touch Huntington.
Huntington, I'm not counting, but I'm counting Perpetual, the Cemetery Trust, and now the Grandview.
Oh, Grandview, yeah.
Yeah, but I believe that one of those was set up through monies that were left to the town with some restrictions.
Okay.
That's why I don't think, that's why I think they're segregated and you can't...
Okay. All right, we need to, yeah, we need a hard answer on all of those, so we know what we can do with them.
Yep. Just for information, I've been doing a little checking, and I need to do a lot more checking, but there are very few towns in the state of Vermont that have more than five...
Right.
...active cemeteries. We have five very active cemeteries, plus in the last couple of years, we've taken over Shasberry Hollow Cemetery, Elbow Cemetery. We also have Little Rhode Island. So those three have to be cared for at least semi-annually. So we have the five plus the three. And if you look at all the ancient cemeteries in Shasberry, we've got about seventeen.
Right.
Yep.
So we have, we have a lot of work to take care of some of them.
We do. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you so much, Jonathan.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
I'll get that to Dave.
Yeah, of course.
Our wish list.
All right, let's move along here. We're up to item ten, which is Town Garage Transfer Station.
I don't know if we wanna move on to Jason, who's here.
Yeah, Jason, come on up. Probably the main item with the garage tonight is gonna be the discussion of the pad issue.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So we're all aghast to find out that MSK made a mistake. It's the first time that's ever happened.
Unfortunately, not the first, but, you know, but we all, we do our best to own up to and try to solve the problems that arise. So we know you're human now. That's very true.
So as a good... Dave, why don't you bring us up to speed on exactly what the issue is there?
Three of the pads at the transfer station are about two and a half feet short of the length of the standard container. So the option is, how are we gonna...
Excuse me, just so the crowd at home knows, we're talking about concrete slabs that the containers for garbage will sit on.
Will sit on, right. And the question is to lengthen the pads to be able to take the pressure of just a container sliding in, being dropped on the end of it. There's several points of view on it. While we have Jason here to review what's an acceptable course to correct this situation. But it is just simply a two and a half foot, roughly two and a half foot section on the end of three slabs, four slabs is the correct length, so it's just how are we gonna do it and have it all worked out?
So did you pass around the...
We emailed out to everyone today.
Okay, does anybody want copies?
I can bring it up. This is, so we reached out to a... You're electronic, Tim, I know, but if you want a paper copy, I can give that to you as well. We reached out to an structural engineer that we work with pretty closely and asked him to review, asked him to review the possible solution, and he came back. This, he offered to respond with a stamped memo, and I decided that I would bring this to you in draft form, and we could talk about it. And unfortunately, you have to go back and forth between an email and a solution, but in general, we had proposed, we had proposed an extension with bars connecting the two separate pads, and then with, essentially with rebar in between, sort of continuing the slab out so that the roller could land on the concrete slab as we intended it for it. He came back and mostly agreed, except he recommended adding a small haunch to the end so that it would essentially act as a cantilever and help support the structure of the slab so that it, that it would, could maintain the bond and not tip.
You're gonna have to explain haunch to me.
A haunch, so, or a cantilever, so if you look at your plan, I call that a haunch, basically where you have a small extension. Essentially, it's like a combined footing. So you add a sort of extra footing on the bottom. And that will act as a support to any kind of tipping that may happen on the slab.
Okay. So what we're, just so people at home understand, we're, there's one point of view that says this will not be structurally sound unless we put a whole one-piece pad in. And what you're offering is that we can add the two feet if we do it right with this kind of configuration.
That's right. I've requested a structural engineer to review and to provide their feedback on an appropriate solution. So this is a recommendation from them.
That footing, that haunch, would be great anyway. I mean, it's probably...
So if we can just go back a little bit on the purpose of the slabs, and I think it's important just to sort of get some context about what these are there for. In our initial planning process with you guys and the transfer, the group that was working on the transfer station, based on past experience, the issue that we were concerned about was the fact that if a lot of these transfer stations where you're sort of putting down and taking up these roll-off dumpsters, they're on a gravel base, and so you're constantly sort of driving that roll-off as you drop it into place down into the gravel, and you continually sort of scour it out and create a maintenance hassle. So part of, the main purpose is really to prevent that from happening. So if you think about what actually happens, the brunt of the activity happens on the back end of the tipping, of the roll-off, and then the roll-off itself, when it hits this slab, which is a twelve-inch thick slab, so it's not like a sidewalk slab, lands sort of straight down, and usually when that happens, it's empty. So, but I think his solution is appropriate and will help maintain the longevity of those slabs. There's lots of slabs that are married together with connectors in this manner, so... And I did, I did meet with Craig this morning about his letter, and we discussed, we discussed it among other things, so...
You talked about this solution with him?
I told him that we, I heard his concern, and that we had forwarded on to a select, to a structural engineer to review it and provide comments and feedback.
Okay, just so we don't talk in code, Craig Weaver, who's doing the excavation at the landfill, wrote a letter to the select board saying he did not believe that a piece-together slab would hold up as well as digging it up and putting in a whole new one-piece slab.
Mr. Weaver doesn't have any guarantees on this anyways, so it's not, if this fails, it has nothing to do with Mr. Weaver.
No, no, I believe Mr. Weaver was making that comment out of his concern for the town.
Okay, all right.
Now, is this additional piece you put down here gonna be the same grade concrete as what's there?
Yes.
And it's gonna be pinned into the existing slab?
Yep.
And you think that'll solve the problem?
I do, and I have requested that a structural engineer agree or provide additional feedback, and that's what he's done.
Well, I think we're inclined to agree. I think our responsibility to the town would dictate that we get our own structural opinion from an engineer, and that's, of course, meant as no slight to you or your engineer, but I think to, in a, to be completely open about it, I think it would be appropriate for us to ask an engineer that we pick if this is gonna be as sound as a new one-piece slab. Sound like a way to go?
Just as a matter of course, this engineer is not directly related with us.
So you already have contact?
We, we, this is a separate, this is an individual consultant that's not connected with our firm.
I believe you, I can, I understand. I think this is an appearance issue, that if we're gonna take an opinion here, the, I think it would satisfy everybody, including Mr. Weaver and anybody that he might be talking to, that if we get an independent engineer that verifies that this is a good solution, we're ready to go that way.
I mean, like, are you on the hook for this thing for ten or fifteen years afterwards anyways? Is that not right?
I mean, engineers don't warranty.
Okay.
We're the, we, these are designed, these are, I mean, this is in the context of the whole project. It would act in the same...
Yeah, you don't warranty, but some, but...
I carry professional liability insurance, and this would be, this activity would be, this kind of...
Is Russell on the hook for some, for something in the future? It's a workmanship issue.
I would have to look at the contract, but I don't know if Russell is warrant, is gonna be warranting the work for fifteen years.
The, a standard...
I think it's probably more like a year.
A standard contract warranty is a year.
Okay.
So, and...
Yeah, so Russell's on the hook for one year.
That's all. I guess if this thing's gonna fail, it'll fail after. It could take more than a year for it.
These are also transfer stations. They don't last forever. I believe that you're getting a durable system that was well-considered. And unfortunately, three of the slabs were short.
Yeah.
So, and I scratched my head about why all of them were not short, but they weren't. There were just three of them.
Jason, that's the wheel, right?
Correct.
So what we're looking at is, the truck wheels would never actually even get to this. This is just the drop-down of the front of the...
That's where the bearing weight is, Dave. That's where all your weight is, right there.
When we drop it in, it's gonna push the back end in, and the roller will drop this in.
Right, but where you get the most weight, I mean, is where that ramp is sitting like this, you draw that roll-off out there. Right here is where your most weight is.
That's, that's...
Because you draw, you draw it up.
Ken, it's the opposite.
It's the opposite.
So this is the front wheel. So if you've got, if the truck is backed up, the roll-off comes off and goes to the back, which is on the slab that's currently there.
So the part where that is, at the back at that, at the...
And this comes...
Where you're gonna pick it up.
So that your roller is gonna come down a foot outside of the seam here.
Okay, well, I'm looking at the other way around.
Yeah, no, this isn't, that's not the rear roller, so the brunt of the force is coming is more towards the wall than this location.
Okay.
But regardless, the cantilever's gonna act well, pinning, pinning the slabs are gonna act well, there'll be a, you know, will, will fill the void so that there's not water that gets in and freezes and thaws, so...
Jason, was this Sokol?
Yeah, Steve Sokol.
That's the guy I was gonna go to.
Sorry, what?
This engineer is the guy I was gonna go to, to get this opinion, Steve Sokol.
So I guess the game plan would be, if this was to happen, you could pin it together, and if it did fail, then what do you do from there? Then you just dig the whole thing up and put a solid slab in, as you probably should've had in the first place?
I don't, I mean, I guess my opinion is I would not be proposing this to you if I did not feel like it would be a satisfactory solution. So if I felt like, if I felt like it had to be, the only way to give you guys a complete solution that would work for your particular situation would be to replace this slab, then that's what I'd be here telling you that we would do. So...
So you've already got a second opinion, you're looking for a third.
What's the board's opinion?
I don't think we need another opinion. Dave is gonna use the person that they used.
Do we still have the name that I was given?
Where did you get the name?
From our architects.
Okay. Well, this engineer, he'll certify that he believes this is an appropriate solution?
I can request a stamped memo, correct.
Okay. All right, well, if everybody on the board is comfortable, Dave was gonna go to this engineer anyway. He's not affiliated with MSK. We get a certified opinion from him, a stamped memo from him, saying that he believes this is okay. The logic of it says that this is not where the primary force is being applied to this. Then it sounds like we're all in agreement? then it sounds like we're all in agreement.
So, are we gonna have to pay for this engineer to certify this, or...
I'm handling this side of it.
Yeah.
So, you're gonna take care of those expenses for us?
I've taken care of it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for your understanding.
Okay. All right, as far...
I guess that's the joke.
As far as documenting this, does this work? Do we need this to be a motion? Do we need a change order? What do you think we need?
Uh, it doesn't require a change order, because MSK is taking care of all the expenses that are associated with this. I think the board might wanna make a motion to accept a proposal based on the receipt of a stamped engineering report.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the, what's the name of the engineer?
Steve Sokol.
Steve Sokol, to accept the, the solution for the short pad based on a Steve Sokol proposal, pending a stamped memo from Steve Sokol in effect. Moved by Ken, seconded by Art.
The name difference.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good, thanks for coming in.
Thank you, Dave.
My pleasure, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah.
And don't make any more mistakes.
Sure.
Yes, yes, sir.
That'd be great.
So, they all were right there?
No, just what? I mean, we're talking typo here, essentially, on the, on the plan, right? I mean, isn't that essentially what?
You know, I went back and I really tried to wonder whether there was a decision that we made somewhere along the lines that had us come to that 20-foot distance, and I found no justification, because I went back into our original conceptual plan, and all of the dumpsters in that location were to be eight by 22.
Mm-hmm.
I can't follow the logic.
Okay.
Just one of the things that happens.
It just happens, you know, and sometimes you just have to say, you know?
Goes with the territory.
You gotta go back.
This is a bad on a million-dollar project.
You have to remember the, the...
We need to put it in context.
There was a guy who said, "There's no such thing as a perfect plan, it's all how you deal with it."
Right, right.
Have a great night.
Thanks, Jason. Okay, anything else we need to talk about relative to the transfer station or the garage?
Project's moving along, the transfer station is open, we have a few things correcting the transfer station, some ponding water from the rainstorm this weekend that just shouldn't be happening, but we haven't accepted it fully anyway, so we'll just add that to the punch list, and actually, the rain was kinda helpful, because it pointed out some low spots to be corrected, so, you know, it's all part of it. And it's moving along, the building's moving, moving along, as you can see.
Yeah.
The, all transfer stations should come down maybe the end of this week, the beginning of next week, Trevor and I still have to get some stuff out of it. Wells in, it's moving along, so, no major thing, you can just watch it go up bit by bit. January 11th is the opening date now, and now...
Opening for?
Well, that's the completion, our acceptance date of the building.
And that's when the work starts inside?
No, that's when it's completed, 100% completed, January 11th, about two...
Oh, January 11th.
Yeah, it's about three weeks behind schedule, which really isn't bad either on a project this size, with its weather, which doesn't help the site work at all. So, you know, I think it's moving along fairly well. Once it's sealed up, the concrete will be poured, I think in a couple of weeks for the floor of the building, and we'll be on our way.
You mentioned the well.
Well is in, 200 feet, hit about 170, a very deep well, hit 175 with a little murky, then went to 200. It is being tested, if I can get it powered up next Thursday, as part of our regular routine groundwater monitoring, they're gonna be down here, so we're gonna power it up, and they'll test that well also.
Okay.
And that will be on our permanent list of testing groundwater, uh, because we took out two wells there in this whole process, so we're gonna add it up, because it's covered the ground as well anyway, so we'll just continually test it, so. No other than that, I, you know, we're moving along at an appropriate pace, and there's not been no real big surprises, little things, I mean, something like this, and it's caused the color of the windows, which we saw.
We got through that.
All right, I wanted us to do a little review of our goals that we set for the select board for this year, because I, some of them I think need to be revisited in light of conversations I've had with our road foreman and the way things are, are coming along, so I... We'd go through those. I had. Okay, I don't know why it's doing that. Let's try that again. Okay, it's doing that. So, we had some long-term and short-term goals, our short-term goals were all related to zoning bylaws changes, and those are moving along, the planning commission has scheduled hearings, or is in the process of scheduling hearings, on the changes that we talked about on motel conversions, on Airbnb-type rentals, and relative to that pesky table of uses in the, in the, in the bylaws, so those are coming along. The long-term plans involved the water main replacement, which we are still planning to do, and the capital equipment replacement schedule for equipment, those were mainly things that we wanted to discuss and get to, the town plan that's being rewritten now as we speak, also by the planning commission. Capital equipment schedule needed to be revisited and probably given even some more thought, because Michael has talked to me about some ideas that he's forming about what kind of equipment we might actually need, and whether or not we're, we're right-sized for some things. Mike, you have any quick comments relative to that, or?
Um, no, I don't wanna say anything quite yet.
Okay, okay.
But, I, it's definitely needed, there are some pieces of equipment out there that just, it's hard to utilize efficiently.
Right.
That we could turn loose now and still gain a profit to getting something that was more efficient for what we need in this town.
Right.
But I'm gonna write something up for you.
Yeah, but an example of the kind of thing that's happening with Mike is the brush tractor that we're using now. We're renting it, we're putting it through a trial, seeing how, what kind of, you know, pace we can get out of the crew relative to brushing with, with a rented tractor instead of, you know, buying one ourselves. The big thing really, though, was the, what I proposed was the 50-year gravel road plan earlier this year, where I was suggesting that we, we should really consider putting more, more material into the roads on a regular basis, and I suggested, you know, that at a minimum, you know, a mile a year of new fabric would get us, you know, having better roads in no less than 50 years, and that would entail something like a $100,000 a year expense, and then as time goes, goes by, maintaining that would require the addition of new gravel, which would also have to be budgeted. But having talked with Mike, he's talking to me about giving that some thought before we charge forward with that, and in particular, he would like to have a couple of years to establish a real maintenance plan on the roads, relative mainly, I think, to the brushing and ditching that we talked about so much earlier.
Trees, yeah.
And tree removal.
Tree removal, culverts, installation of new culverts and poor drainage areas, there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of money we could spend in just regular maintenance, just getting the, you know, the drainage up to where it needs to be, cleaning out some of these, some of the culverts, the pipes are probably fine, they're just somewhat plugged, before we start adding too much gravel, cause if we add, add more gravel and we don't have adequate drainage, we're just gonna end up where we are right now, it's just gonna wash right back into the, into the ditches that aren't there, and fill our culverts and stuff, but I think we have some steps to move forward on before we go that way.
I, I just wanna say that I think we've got, got it headed the right way, I'll put it that way. Most of the areas that, you know, all the needed fabric has got it, and you're not gonna go out and just put fabric down and gravel down just to say you did it, it's not the way to go, Tim. You, gravel does not evaporate, it erodes, it washes off the road, you know, you get, if you don't put dust control down, it'll blow off the road. There's only one road that I can think of, and the whole town of Shasbury, that doesn't have enough gravel, that's Potomac Grammar Road. And I think Mike will agree with me that just throwing down gravel is not the answer, just to say you did something.
Yeah.
The road, the road, when it needs gravel, it'll tell you, it'll, it shows you.
Well, it, it's also the case that if we, we will very likely find that if we get proper brush pushed back, get the ditching done right, get a crown that, that holds where, as you were saying earlier, people can drive on both sides of the roads and sit on top, we will likely gain a lot of information about where we do need gravel.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've got some serious areas, Myers Road comes to mind, I mean, the grader literally has to go around trees that are growing so close on the edge of the road, and, but to go in there and cut a swath, you're gonna get, you're gonna be crucified, you know what I'm saying? We gotta start talking to people about, you, we gotta move these trees back, and, you know, I know some people, they're just, they're gonna be really upset, but it's gonna be a long process.
It's not just great, it's safety, too.
On, oh wait, Madison Road. You're going on Madison Road, and you can, you just look at the road, and you can see where the road is formed because of those big trees up to there, I mean, and that's everywhere.
Well, it's dangerous, you go, you got a three, three-foot diameter tree right at the edge of the road, you hit that with a car, somebody dead.
It is a liability.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so I think we're all in agreement, we're, we're gonna hold on that and let Mike have a couple of years to establish a maintenance schedule and see, and start to inform us about where, where we really need gravel.
I mean, I, I'm, no doubt, there, there are spots that need gravel, I hear it from the guys running the grader, you know, it's really, it's really bony there, that needs gravel, and I get it, there's, there are spots, but there are spots that need other work before we start putting a lot of money into gravel. And granted, you're still gonna have to add gravel every year, it's part of, they're dirt roads, you know, that's just part of maintenance, so, you know, if you guys let me do that, I think we can really move forward in a good direction.
Work with Dave on what we need for gravel number.
Yeah, right, right.
No, that's what I mean, the grader, the grader guy, tell you where he did gravel.
Yeah, no, they will, they do, he's on the...
That shows you, it...
And so what I wanted us to talk about tonight is what is, is taking another look at Coal Hall and seeing what we can do for Coal Hall, given that we're not gonna march off on a, a new $100,000 a year expense on the roads right away, but certainly Coal Hall is someplace that has needed work for a long time, and the current state of Coal Hall does not reflect well on the town. The interior is rundown and it's really not functional. Fortunately, that is largely gonna get dealt with this year, this December, we're scheduled to create workable space and fix the windows and do things that really have to be done to the interior. What I'd like us to start thinking about is the exterior, and the exterior needs not only basic maintenance, but I think we should all start to think about turning Coal Hall into something the town can be proud of, and right now, it's, it's definitely not that. And with the public works operation across the parking lot moving out this year, it's time for us to think about what this whole area should, what we should do with this whole area, and turn it into something the town can, can point to with pride. In terms of just basic maintenance in, on the exterior, we need to think about removing the old garage, cleaning up the yard, we know we've been thinking about that for a while, but we, we should be in a position to, to do that this next year if we, if we have the wherewithal. We've been talking for a couple of years that the wood needs painting, we've been trying to figure out how to budget that expense, it's gonna be a big expense, but the longer we put it off, the, just the worse it's gonna get, and if we don't get to it, we're gonna be looking at, at, at wood repair, more wood repair, and then we've got leaky windows and things that just, just basic maintenance that have to be done. But even beyond just basic maintenance, it, it strikes me that Coal Hall has a good side and a bad side. If you look at it from the alley, essentially out back, you see a final stone building. If you look at Coal Hall from the parking lot where everybody comes in, you see this monstrosity of a, of a staircase tacked onto the end outside of this whole stone building that is not attractive, it's in bad need of repair also, but it really detracts from the, from the character of the building. And Dave and I have been talking, and I think it would really be nice if we could think about taking down that staircase and restoring the, the main entrance to the, to this building, the way it was meant to be originally, and let's remember, the, the main entrance, we have a veterans memorial out here that's maintained by our veterans committee, has been for quite some time, no one ever sees it except at the Christmas party, because that's the only time we, we open up the front doors, but if we could make this building to, in a way that would come in the front doors, that would be seen again. Another problem we need to figure out in the front here is the, the Christmas tree is growing into the power lines out there, so we need to figure out what we're gonna do about that. It's, Art certainly knows about it, cause he's up there on the ladder next to the power lines, and we're either gonna have to get a smaller tree or move the power line to do something. And if we don't do anything else, it, Dave pointed out to me a couple of weeks ago, and now my, my jaw just dropped open, because I hadn't noticed it, but it's really embarrassing when you think about it, we don't even have a sign that says these are the town offices. If you tell somebody to go to the town offices, you give them an address, and they drive around until they think they have the address. At the very least, we ought to be able to, to do that. I would remind people that the long road that we've been on, building a town garage for the maintenance, for road maintenance, started in 2009 with a, an engine, the select board asked engineers and architects to look at, what are we gonna do about Coal Hall? And the first thing they said was, "You've got a bigger problem across the parking lot, it's taken us nine years to solve that." In the meantime, Coal Hall has still been sitting here deteriorating, and, you know, I spend a lot of my time working on economic, economic development issues in this area, and the main issue that we have is the loss of population, and I've said before, the way, the way you attract people back toward the area, the way you attract people is to be more attractive, and I think that could certainly start with a, with a town hall that we can show a little pride in.
I'm a little bit concerned about putting huge amounts of money into this that is not really designed as a, as a office complex type of thing, that's what we need. I guess, I mean, my question to you is if something came up, if Mr. Peckham all of a sudden says, "I wanna sell that building at a lot lower cost," you're looking at this, you're looking at here, which one, where would you put your money? And so, I, I just, yes, we need to do some things, but how much we get into it, I'm deeply concerned.
I agree, and, you know, when, when the Peckham building looked like a possibility, I, I strongly felt that it was money better spent in that direction than here. That fell through, I'm not... Uh, I'm not aware of anyplace else that we would, we would think about going. And, you know, in the meantime, you know, we're, uh, we, we have a, a town hall that we, that's kind of, kind of a disgrace to the town and the, the state we've let it get in. You know, somebody gave us this beautiful building and we've let it get into this state. At some point we have to, yeah, you know, if not, if not go whole hog, we at least have to do-
I agree.
-the maintenance and put up a sign.
Yes.
I, I had a thought, Tim, that when we get the new town garage going, we're going to take this garage down over here. My thought was, and just, I'm just throwing it out just for something to say, uh, you're going to leave a, a small building down here for the, it's a lot made of wood. But we could take that building off, you've got that slab over there that's already got septic system. Could maybe put a modular house out there, uh, and have that be your town office. Your handicap accessibility is going to be a whole lot better than it is here. And it's, I'm just throwing it out for something to say.
Build a new building over there?
Put it right on top of that slab. Take the garage down and out back, you're going to have to have something small for the sidewalk stuff for the winter.
What's the footprint of this? What's the footprint over there?
You're going to have the, the, uh, sidewalk machine for the winter soap blowing.
I don't know either.
Yeah.
What if I may?
Yeah.
The issue is that, uh, we've discussed this, uh, over the last two years and we have a forty to fifty thousand dollar construction project starting in three weeks.
Right.
So I think we've moved beyond parts of this. The commitment's been made and we made it over a year ago.
Yep.
After this is done, we will not need any more office space because I can envision the day where we would be expanding the staff of the building, uh, to any great extent. So, uh, for the next foreseeable, the way we were viewing it, because whatever we do, it would require a bond of some type and we're committed for nineteen more years to the garage bond, that we're kind of establishing in place for the next nineteen years at minimum. And we've gone through the discussion of even if we leave, we still have this building to maintain. So, I think we could, you know, it's up to the board, but I think we kind of, we've signed some contracts. I think we're pretty committed to being here and being here for a considerable amount of time. There is funds, going back to the funds with Rob, I mentioned this to, to Tim earlier, the GW Hawkins Fund, which has a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in it, is for the sole discretion of the select board to make improvements to the town. And I think this is one building that could use an improvement. That is not, that's money there, we have to maintain a balance of eighty thousand. This one actually has a number, we can't have to leave an eighty thousand dollars. But that's sixty-two thousand dollars to do many of the things from starting the painting to the outside and, you know, I would like to see the parking lot pushed back, closed off the back, make this, improve the veterans park, get a new Christmas tree. And, you know, uh, things like that. There are many things we can, there's many things that could be do, done here, but I think we kind of crossed over when we signed the contracts to, to do the construction up here. So, for at least a good number of years we're here, so this area really does need to be improved. Uh, I know about the slab over there and everything, but I can't envision the time when we would actually need any more space.
Well, it's just-
No, I know, I know, I know, we've talked about this, we've talked about this, but, uh, the bottom line is, you're worth my trailer showing up in two weeks and we move into a little bracket. We're, we're pretty committed to this right now.
Yeah, Tom, Dave made a good point. We're spending forty thousand on the interior. We've, we've looked at estimates for the, just the painting, around sixty thousand dollars and that's got to get done. And then, uh, you know, uh, the, the, you know, what it would cost to, to restore the entrance, uh, I don't know. But, you know, one thing that I'd like the board to consider in the next budget cycle is possibly, uh, the money for an architect to give us a vision of what we might be able to do with, with the staircase gone, the, the entrance over here, the, the garage gone in making this into, uh, a really nice town center space.
One thing you want to consider too, because Ken brought this up to me too, was the public meetings up here and the need to make this, uh, a more accessible space. Because frankly, you know, uh, at the town, I guess that was a convenient place to put that, but it's really in the wrong place. That needs to be over here. This staircase should be an internal staircase for employees. And that is not a fire exit, that is, and this is. So you have to do some kind of combination over here. You could put a external elevator there and change the opening downstairs so that you would walk into an elevator that would come to the second floor with the stair- I mean, there's innumerable things that could be done once you get the focal points down.
Right.
Which would be the offices up here, the offices downstairs. Because I look at that, the only handicap accessible area is through all these locked offices. And, uh, you know, it's that ramp they put on the side there is, is too steep frankly. It doesn't fit the code. But, you know, there's the, yeah, there's a lot you can look at. Once you finish the construction, you know, it'd be good, I mean, except for the painting, everything else is up in, in the air. And the painting we can cut back dramatically because the painting is off through these windows. You can look at these windows. I would charge a fortune to paint one of these things and just spend months doing this. But we can get the steeple, the deck here, the porch and all this painted so it looks nice, uh, the doors, fix this hallway here, because this is, me storing this is, is a big part of it. And then we could work on the windows separately because that way we, horrendous task, frankly. But, uh, and then there are all the other options that are out there, including pushing the parking lot back, re-stoning the parking lot, uh, doing some landscaping up front to make the veterans park a, a better area for people to come in. And they would notice it when they start using the front door, you know? Because that would be the primary access to the treasure zoning, um, planning meetings, DRB meetings, everything, so it'd be a long way to go. Basically, essentially make this a fire exit.
Yep.
Right. Okay, well, for your consideration as we move deeper into budget season. Okay. Dave, it's eight thirty and the next item is FY twenty twenty budget.
Well, we'll take that up. Uh, the main thing about the, the budget is I will have a draft that I will distribute in paper or electronically to everyone by hopefully the end of this week. I have too many things on the stove, I didn't finish it last week. Uh, we'll start, uh, making a schedule for the different department heads to come in. This one, uh, some department heads I've spoken to, but this budget is just the general outline. I am looking forward to come in. Essentially, uh, if you took fiscal fifteen's budget and added inflation to it, this budget should come in three to four percent below, but that one would be like you added inflation. But it will be higher than last year's, it's just kind of run out of places to, uh, to scrape up. So, uh, it'll be higher, but, you know, in the long-term view, the budget for fiscal twenty will be below what the fiscal fifteen budget was if you added in inflation. So, we're still well on the spending, uh, as, as best we can. But, uh, you know, there'll be various things on it and there'll be some changes. I mean, we were getting pretty high in gravel, we've had the discussion, we've had the discussion here, there's things to be changed around. Healthcare has gone up a bit, uh, you know, there's a variety of things, but I'll have a little summary. The board can look at it, we can discuss it and then we'll have the department heads in, some who will be, uh, happy with the proposal, some will probably want to make some changes and we can discuss all that. But I want to have one out there in front of us, it'll be in a new format too. We no longer use that spreadsheet that's been in the town report and all that. What I'm doing is I'm taking the NIMRIC, which is what we actually use in the accounting system, uh, creating Excel spreadsheets out of that, which we'll put in the book, which shows more accurately the exact, but the actual accounting lines that everything is assigned to, so we'll be able to, people will be able to follow it better. And also be a lot easier to read and listen, put in books. But, uh, we'll-
And less prone to error, because what we've done in the past is we've taken NIMRIC and typed the numbers into Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah. Sometimes actually even when we're trying to take that, those numbers back out to put into the accounting system, it's, it gets a little fuzzy. So, this will work out a lot better, it'll be a lot clearer for everybody. And the good part is too, when you're looking at the professional audit, which we include in, and then you're looking at the budget, the spreadsheet we're using now, they don't match because our accounting system doesn't match our actual budget audit. So, we're going to correct that this year. But I'll have everything out by the end of the week. Tomorrow, next week at the latest, everybody can look at it and we'll start bringing department heads in, uh, last week, last meeting in November and the first one in December. I think we can, uh, come to an agreement fairly quickly.
Good. Other business?
One. We have these annual contracts from, uh, our internet services, annual maintenance agreement from CAI, our map makers, every year we sign this for twenty-four hundred dollars. They're updating, you know, they do the maintenance on the mapping system. And this year they're also doing a state grant, they're, uh, really going deep in to make sure every, every part was correct. It's, uh, it's going around the whole state. And CIA, a whole bunch of photographers are doing it around the state, but CAI, who already does ours, is doing it again in the state.
All right, can I get a motion to, uh, authorize payment to CAI for another year of, um, GIS maintenance at twenty-four hundred dollars?
So will.
Moved by Ken.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion is agreed to by a vote of five zero zero. All right, uh, reviewing action items, I'm going to go back. The last note I had was on the water fountain, I think we talked about it, but I don't remember crossing it off the list and I believe we said you were going to buy it over the winter and you decided to install it in the fall, in the spring.
It maybe had a, a new thing with the, uh, one that was big enough to fill water bottles out, which, uh, I found, uh, the one they were talking about was nearly seven thousand dollars, so I think that was really the way to go. So, I'm going to look some more. We're not having another rec committee meeting until the end of February, so, uh, if I come across one that'll be more priced in the winter, I'll get in budget dealing, we'll go ahead and buy it, but, uh, it's going to have to come in. I mean, a regular water fountain is bad enough for like twenty-five hundred, but it's close to seven thousand.
Wow.
It's a lot of money.
Just a water fountain is twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah, just a water fountain, just your basic, you know, water fountain.
Like the, the metal thing that sticks out of the wall? Okay. Wow. All right, um, we were, I think the, the dog issue has settled down, but we did ask that we get a legal opinion on that.
Yeah, which is the same legal opinion they gave us before, there's nothing that can be done about a farm dog. We did provide some information, I've spoken to the complaints over there a number of times. I believe, and they're going to their attorneys to, to check, uh, I believe in, in some of the people I've talked to up in Montefiore thing too, that, you know, when he was describing the incident of his, I think it was his daughter's graduation party or something, and the dog is at the fence barking, that dog is not protecting property, it's not protecting animals, you know, it's, so that to me is a violation that should be taken up and the films should be presented to, uh, their attorney to see if there's civil or, uh, some other action that can be taken in court. Then we, we have reviewed with them, as, as has Paul McGann. Because of the nature of this, they have to be the ones stepping forward to take action on this.
It's out of our hands.
Really, there's nothing we can do.
Do we have the ability to deny anyone a farm dog license?
They thought that was a poor idea. I did bring that behind them, they're, they're like, we, we have one farm dog license in town, that one.
Right.
That gets to be a pretty targeted, uh, denial. And, uh, based on what, I wouldn't even know.
Are we required to issue farm dog licenses?
Well, it's not, yes. The law says that you can apply for a farm dog license. So, if we have one applicant and we turn them down-
And you turn it, you can bet, you have good reason for it.
Yeah.
Well, if they have a picture of that dog at the fence looking at them, does that-
That's a violation and I think the best way to finesse proceedings for the neighbors to seek legal counsel and, and take it up, take this action themselves in the form of complaints or, or civil procedures. If we get involved, we're absorbing a lot of the grunt of-
No, I'm not saying we get involved, I'm saying, like you said, it's civil.
That's what I told them, they need an attorney, they need, uh, we provided what we can for the constable, his knowledge of procedures. Noise in the night and all that is, is one thing, that we went over the cameras pointing at the property, all kinds of things, but really they need, they need legal advice.
Okay. And, uh, let's see, there was a bill, water bill that got mailed to the wrong address. I presume that's been, uh, taken care of.
We waived that, that was, uh-
Yeah, but we just wanted to make sure we, we got the right address in the file, so it doesn't have to-
We'll check with Jim.
Yeah, let's check with Jim on that. All right, tonight we, uh, we talked a lot about the cemeteries and, uh, one, one, uh, action item is for the cemetery committee to provide us that wish list with the prices so we can look at it, uh, in writing. And then, um, we need several legal opinions about the, the perpetual care funds, uh, for the cemeteries, including the new, uh, money that we got for Grandview. So, Dave and I will get together and talk about what questions we need to ask of the attorney, make sure we get, ask the right questions. Any other action items that anybody heard? All right, we are not going to have executive session, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So will.
Moved by Ken, seconded by Tony. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.